The Order, the May 27th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight with a notation simply that we're meeting pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order N-29-20 pursuant to which members of the City Council and staff are participating in this meeting via teleconference to reduce the spread of COVID-19. Members of the public have been asked to watch the meeting via live stream either on the city's website or through a wave cable channel 20 and to submit comments in writing by 6 o'clock PM of the day of the meeting to the city clerk. In order to make sure that the comments are fully transparent to the public, every single one of the public comments in their entirety, and there's no three-minute limit, every one of those comments is posted on our website along, right next to the agenda and video for tonight's meetings. And at those moments where a public comment has been submitted, the city clerk will display the name of the commenter so that anyone watching the video live or recorded will also be able to know that there's a comment left available to be seen on the website. And so with that, we'll proceed to Item 1A, which is Presentation by the Public on Matters Not on the Agenda. And Madam Clerk, do we have any items, any public comment on Item 1A?
No, no comments for Item 1A. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Then we'll proceed to Item 1B, which is Council Communications. Are there any reports from our liaison assignments listed on the agenda this evening, Mayor Protem Sandin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency met on May 21st. We accepted grant funding of DWR's Regional Flood Management Program for the Lower Sacramento River Delta North Region, and we approved a contract to evaluate flood protection alternatives related to the future enterprise crossing. We also approved midterm budget adjustments for fiscal year 2020, 2021, and we received an update on the Southport Borrow Restore Project. And I requested that the council receive background on the project directly from the West Safeguard General Manager, and I believe that was sent to council yesterday directly. We also heard an update on the Southport Flood Plane Restoration Project. And finally, we heard an update on the federal project in terms of project progress and advocacy. A new start funding is being supported, great news, by the San Francisco Division of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Thanks.
And thank you. That's great news. Thanks, Mayor Protem Sandin. Other reports this evening? All right, seeing none, then we have, I don't want to see his appointments to boards and commissions, we have none this evening. So next up is the Consent Agenda Items 2 and 3, and we have received comments on Item 2. So Madam Clerk, if you would please display the names of the commenters on in this particular item.
Yeah, one moment.
And I believe that one or more members of the council wishes to make a comment on this item. So before we take up the consent agenda, we'll also take questions and comments on
Mr. Mayor, I could jump in here. I think we have comments displayed on the website, and the link was just shown, but tonight we didn't have the name, so we can proceed with comments from the council.
Okay, then let's proceed. Are there members of the council wish to comment on Item Number 2? Mayor Protem Sandin?
Thank you. I just wanted to share how proud I am of the graduates and congratulate them, and I'm sure all my colleagues are excited and happy for them and their families. I think this class particularly because of what they've been going through, they're strong, resilient, and they've learned a lot about flexibility. I also want to just take a moment to thank our colleagues on the Washington Unified School District Board of Trustees for their leadership and for their commitment, and I believe some of those received comments, I believe, from three of those trustees are supporting, supportive of our partnership, but also thanking the community for coming together to support the graduates.
Perfect. Thank you, Member of them sending, Councilmember Ledesma.
Thanks, Mayor. To all the 2020 graduate seniors, just congratulations. One of my favorite things of the year is actually getting to attend your ceremonies. Really feel, and unfortunately, that won't be happening, and certainly feel for you and your families, and hopefully you have a chance to celebrate. You're not alone. I'll be celebrating this week my own daughter's graduation from high school. So we're with you, we believe in you, and as Mayor Protem Sandin said, you're a resilient bunch, and you'll, this will be a life lesson for a long time that you were the class that went through this, and we couldn't be more proud of you. I'd also like to extend my thanks and congratulations to not only the board trustees, but Superintendent and all her staff, and the teachers who've supported this class through the year through learning how to do online teaching and keeping up the curriculum through the rest of the year through some very hard times. And mostly importantly, for doing the best they can to celebrate throughout the community, whether it's the lawn signs, the banners, we've seen, as all the extraordinary efforts you did to celebrate this class, we're super proud of all of you and wish you all the best.
Councilmember Orozco.
I'll make it quick. I echo the sentiments of my colleagues. Our school board and superintendent have really shown their leadership through all these unknowns and the graduates, you know, wow, what a semester. They say the best thing you could do with your life is to make it interesting, and I would say that this is the experience that no other group of graduating high school seniors can really say, at least we hope. And yeah, to Mayor Protem Sandin's comment, the resilience that's been exercised so far is unparalleled in everyone else's experience. So, you know, pretty close to one of the most serious inflection points of your whole life, and now it's time to embrace the time that we've had with the people that we love in such close proximity, but also to branch out and to be free and to start your own path. So good luck to everyone, and congratulations on such an incredible accomplishment.
Thank you. Councilmember Guerrero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I echo the sentiments of my fellow council members. This is definitely a very challenging time experiencing the transition to, you know, from school to learning at home and trying to figure out how you're going to make this happen, along with the teachers, school board trustees, and Superintendent Luna for trying to pull it all together. I know, you know, just the fear of what this could possibly mean to, you know, just physically, the health-wise, and then, you know, just the employment issues for everybody that had to transition and all huddle together and try to figure out how we're going to go from one stage to the next. And as we move forward, I want to be able to just give a shout out for all of those that have made this, you know, possible, made you a success in where you're at today, especially you, especially the students, because I know that this has been really hard, and it's still the time to grieve, and it's okay, and we grieve with you, and we just want to be here for you for as long as you need that support. And whatever else you need, don't hesitate, you know, to reach out to anybody out there who, you know, your friends or an instructor, you know, Yolo County, you know, folks, anybody on City Council, we're all here for you. You're not alone. And I just want to say that you, your experience today will definitely, knowing from my lifetime experiences, will definitely help you to be a stronger individual in what you plan on in the future. You can make it through this, you can make it through a lot out there in the world. And so wish you a lot of success and what you have planned in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I would just like to add that graduating from high school isn't, is a rite of passage, an enormous accomplishment, and it reflects a commitment to work, to work and to study and to learn and to improve and to grow and to do that with others and to think about our place in the world. But it is the accomplishment of 10, 11, 12, 13 years. This is a moment that's not marking just the last 60 days or the last 90 days, challenging as though they may have been. And those weeks cannot take away any of the pride that our, that the students of West Sacramento ought to feel and that we all feel with them for the tremendous accomplishments that they have been able to achieve during their time, all of their time in school, in their classwork, on the field, in their clubs, in making themselves smarter and better and more caring and more generous and more civic-minded, but also work in the community as kids giving back and volunteering, participating in all the youth sports and the Liddley. You have been, this class of 2020 has been already such an integral part of the community of West Sacramento, and I know we're all counting on you to keep at it, to keep leading and to innovating and to creating. And the slate that's being wiped clean by this emergency in so many different ways is an opportunity for the class of 2020 to draw a new future for yourselves and for our community, to challenge some of the status quo, to make new rules, to fight for more justice, and to create the kind of community that you want to live in. And what a tremendous opportunity, one that you burn, but also with the whole community. It really does take a community to get to this point, and maybe no more so anywhere than here in West Sacramento. And to see so many of our graduates this year who've been involved in activities throughout the community and have been benefited from mentorship and from internships and from support and from nonprofit organizations and family members and business owners and neighbors devoting their time and their support, that's what makes all of us successful, is our own effort and our own work and our own drive, but just as much the people with whom we share those lives with. And certainly, the emergency has shown us that more than ever, but the class of 2020 knows that better than anyone. And so we certainly want to congratulate the graduates, and we're so excited and hopeful for the leadership that you're going to be bringing to our community, all of the great success and ideas and entrepreneurship and talent that you'll be bringing as well. Also, a word to the folks that have men, maybe unexpected educators this year and teachers, the parents and grandmothers and brothers and sisters and others at home, or on the other side of a computer screen, friends and neighbors and family members who've been helping to, in the transition to an online environment for learning. This has been really families all across the community rallying together, learning together, and maybe discovering more about each other's belief in education and in the future and an opportunity. And in some sense, it's been a great gift of this time, is the chance to spend the last few months of high school, learning together with the, with mom and dad or with your annoying brother or whoever else in the household, and to experience what we all will be planning for, which is a lifetime of learning, a lifetime of growing together in the family that's so important to each of us. And so congratulations to the graduates. Thanks again to the teachers and the staff and Superintendent Luna and to the school board, the President of the School Board, President Jackson, and Kobe Pizzotti, and other members of the trustees wrote to us this evening as well, and our partnership with them has been tremendous. And so thanks, thanks to all of them, and congratulations to the class of 2020. All right, with that, then we have the consent calendar up for a vote, if there is a motion.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Protem Sandin and seconded by Councilmember Guerrero, so no further question or debate. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on the consent agenda?
Councilmember Orozco.
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sandin.
Aye.
Mayor Cabaldin.
Aye.
So that motion carries unanimously, and the consent agenda is adopted. That brings us to Item 4, which is a request for consideration of Resolution 20-59, approving a budget appropriation and award of contract with Blue Beam Incorporated for electronic plan check software. Mr. Robinson?
Good evening. I'll provide a brief background, and I'll be happy to stay around and answer questions at the end. The COVID crisis has placed an extraordinary strain on any number of city processes, but in so doing, it's also revealed multiple opportunities for the city to implement technological or process-based improvements that can make the city both more efficient and more resilient. And one of those areas is the city's plan check function in the Community Development Department. Historically, municipal plan check functions have always been organized around the movement of rolled paper. So, you know, in our case, on the second floor, you can see that, you can see that everywhere there's plans in offices, there's plans on the floor, there's a red cart that we purchased to help us move plans more efficiently from one place to the other. If you come to City Hall, as you all do all the time, you've no doubt noticed the many trucks that on a typical day would be parked in the parking lot from different printing companies whose purpose there is to print plans that were given to them by architects and run them up to our front counter. So there's just, the whole enterprise is centered around a lot of physical movement of paper, and we've tried to depict that visually in attachment to your staff report. That's a simplified version, but the takeaway from that really is kind of the organizational inefficiency that results from a business process that's based on moving, you know, 25, 50-pound rolls of paper across cities and across the river and throughout the building and back and forth. So, you know, as a normal business process, that is cumbersome, as we've depicted there, but during the COVID crisis, it's been just extraordinarily difficult to continue operating in that fashion. We've got staff who review plans, who are working from home, who have to physically come to City Hall at certain intervals to physically grab plans and sort of manhandle them home, to review them and then bring them back. And it's really not a sustainable approach. I think through the hard work of the community development staff, there's been an impressive throughput of plans and work that's getting done, but it's really not sustainable. So the purpose of this report is to ask for authority for some funding for Measure E to pay for an improved approach, which would basically be an electronic approach to plan check. And we've looked at a number of different softwares. The one that we're preferred, the preferred approach is the review software package from a company called Blue Beam. We like that one because it is compatible with the, it's the same product that our Plan Check and Inspection Consultant Bureau Veritas uses, so it's compatible there. It's also a market leader, it's used by several jurisdictions in the region. And the advantage of using this, a product like that, is basically that, you know, as opposed to having to print paper and move the paper all around and then ultimately, you know, ideally turn it back into an electronic format to store it, the plans would be in electronic format from the beginning. So for your larger projects, they could be submitted electronically with a push-to-button from the architect or the engineer, the whole process internal to the city, including, you know, stamping the plans and signing off on them could be accomplished electronically, and then the finalized plans could be stored electronically, so which is save a lot of bureaucratic friction moving paper around the office. So we believe that this expenditure is consistent with the goals of Measure E in that it would provide a technological benefit that would make the city more efficient both during COVID and beyond. So we respectfully ask for your approval of Resolution 20-59. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Also, Randy Goodwin, the city's building official, is on the line if you've got more detailed questions about how this product would affect his processes in the office.
Great, thanks, Mr. Robinson. Are there questions for staff? Councilmember Guerrero.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Robinson, for the background. It's really helpful, and I think it's a really good idea to do this as we move forward. I think this type of technology has been around for a little bit, and there's just a seamless way of being able to get the documentation, being on the planning commission and seeing how much documentation there is to looking at a permit and, you know, behind, you know, the architect's drawings and things like that, and doing it, you know, with less paper and even under the circumstances where we're remotely working, this process makes a lot of sense. And just being, just, I was wondering, I think there is a way to also amend and make changes, and it's kind of like a live document. Is that what this one does as well? So you can interact in between the individual that's submitting a request, the applicant, and then the folks that are working in our administration. Is that process in place as well with this particular software?
I believe it is. Let me let Randy respond to that.
Okay.
That process is a component that we can, we can turn on for Blue Beam. Absolutely.
Okay, good. That, I think it makes it a lot easier and smoother to get some of these things fluid, moving back and forth if you haven't suggested change instead of, you know, I think right now what happens is you have to go back, and it takes a month, and you come back and review it again, where if you can do it more quickly, that would help us to get things approved faster.
And other questions or discussion, Mayor Protem Sandin?
Thank you. I'm excited to hear about this, and I just had a couple of questions regarding training needs of staff and also clients, and what the transition might look like moving from paper to online. And then I noticed that the request has five monitors and the software. Are you anticipating any additional technology needs to actually make this be able to be up and running? Will there be, is that completely it?
Yeah, we believe that's, we believe that's, that's it, yeah, because it's in order to get, in order to get the full benefit of the software, it's important to have a monitor that has sufficient resolution and a big enough size. We've had a situation on one of the other electronic plan check mechanisms that we have, where one of our staff members was trying to look on a laptop screen, and it's kind of like trying to read a book with a magnifying glass or a spectacle or something, it's just you can only see such a tiny piece of the document at a time. So the, you know, Randy, you know, let us know what staff members needed to monitor in order to fully utilize it. So we think the computers are fine and everything else is fine, so I think the monitors with the software should be sufficient.
And then the staffing, the transition question, what does a transition look like between paper to this online product? And do both staff and clients need training? Is it, is it just going to happen one day?
Yeah, no, well, let me, let me have a, let me have a whack at this, and Randy can correct me if I go off the rails, but, you know, the way, the way we're looking at this is this, this is not going to be a product for every single building permit, so if somebody's doing a water heater in their garage, a homeowner is not going to get online and draw an electronic plan and use this process. So we'll continue to process, you know, the smaller projects with paper plans. So the entities that would be most likely to use this are going to be your, you know, kind of mid-sized to larger, you know, architects and designers and contractors who already are probably using the software already. So on their end, there will probably not be a great deal of training need, and we are, we do get some, you know, online training and some in-person training with the product itself. So we, I would think, and I'll let Randy again correct me, that we would kind of look to phase this in with some of our more larger sophisticated projects and then as kind of work our, work our way down and train staff along the way.
John, you nailed it. We will phase it in, and we already started that. We, the council is probably aware, we, it's a hybrid process that we put together for CalSTRS, and we used a modified PDF method, which will be part of Blue Beam and Acela, the method that we're moving into, it'll just be much more sophisticated. So we've started, and this will be another step forward, and it won't be seamless. We'll have some stumbles, but it's, it's a big leap forward, and I really, really appreciate council looking at this seriously. It's a, it's a great thing.
Thank you. The last thing is I wasn't surprised, Mr. Robinson, but I appreciate you adding metrics to actually measure the success of having us transition to this paperless format. I do think that this is the, I agree with utilizing Measure E funds, I don't know how my colleagues feel, I feel that it's appropriate, and I also do think if there's some contribution that can come from FEMA, or it appears that that will be researched and looked into, because in part, it's because of some of the restrictions that we have now that this is being looked at as a solution. Thanks.
Questions or comments? I'm also very supportive of this. I know Councilmember Johansson pushed this concept probably six or seven years in a row, starting in 19, I'm sorry, in 2007 or so, and it's the only reason actually why I've been hesitant about Measure E funds is that Measure E funds, that this portion of Measure E should be about sort of looking at new technologies and the deployment of smart city technologies and looking backwards to, you know, to what is already standard in some of our neighboring jurisdictions, isn't, isn't really in that lane, but, you know, I'll take it in order to get this, this speech moved forward. But I think it's an example, you know, we just honored the class of 2020, who despite sort of a full generation of people saying, you just can't do online learning, and here's 1,700 reasons why it's impossible, people had to, and they figured it, they figured it out with varying levels of success, but the, but learning is not going to be the same afterwards. And I know as a professor, I just moved all my classes online for the first time ever, and, but had never wanted to do it before, for all the reasons that planners and others have not wanted to move some of these, these processes online either. We are, although, although, you know, we're now moving deeply into stage two through this particular emergency, you know, all of, all of the forecasts are that, you know, we're going to be facing, you know, renewed outbreaks and resurgences and other issues in the future, we need to be ready and to have as many of our services, especially those that are related to our income and to our basic services, but in this case, our income and our economic development, need to be digital, and they need to be accessible online, and we need to, we need to be moving, you know, expeditiously in that direction. So I think, you know, a transition that is deliberate is important, but also we, a lot of these services just need to do, and we also need to recognize that when some of, you know, when our, when our sister city across the river is already implementing digitized services, that it creates an expectation among developers and architects and contractors that, of course, as an equally urban city that we, that we would do the same, we don't have to match the move for move, sometimes we should be ahead of them, and sometimes we should let them go first, but they are a good benchmark in that space as well. I'm very supportive of this, and I hope it gives us, you know, with, under your leadership, Mr. Robinson and Randy's as well, and the city manager, the oomph to keep pushing to take more and more of our processes to the online space and digital as well, and also to the point where somebody who is doing the water heater or something like that can do it online, maybe not using, you know, a complex software where they have to, you know, draw, you know, really detailed architectural plans, but where they also don't need to come down and fill out and, you know, turn in pieces of paper and stuff like that as well. We should be looking about, about the needs, both of the large projects, but also of the regular user that's just trying to make their, their house a little more livable if they're going to be in it for 60 or 90 days straight. All right, Mr. Ledesma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, forgive me, I tried to get my button off mute a little earlier and didn't get there, but I am supportive of this as well, and I'm not going to say too much more to the group, but necessity is the mother of all invention here. We have to, we have to adapt, and it's amazing what, I think we said at the start of this, as we hit the shelter in place and everyone worked from home, we had a lot of discussion around how this was going to change processes, and we hoped it would. And while it's a crisis and there's tragic outcomes that we're trying to prevent, there's also could be some opportunity, and this is one that we need to take advantage of. So fully supportive of this. I too agree, this is a good use of Measure E money, not as we envisioned a few years ago when we outlined policy, maybe because of the reasons the mayor said, but equally, we need to be on footing to be able to adapt and innovate on the go for this basic function. So this is something that I'm super supportive, and with that, I'll make the motion to approve the recommended action.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Ledesma and seconded by Councilmember Orozco, so no further question or debate. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Mayor Protem Sandin.
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Member Orozco.
Aye.
And Mayor Cabaldin.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. That motion carries 5-0, and the recommendation's adopted. Finally, that brings us to Item 5, which is our weekly update in actions on the city's COVID-19 response. Mr. Laurel.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. So tonight, I'm going to be giving the normal update with focus on the COVID-19 case data. We'll start there. I'm going to give a few updates that actually weren't in this week's written report about city operations, just because they're sort of evolving plans for how we're going to start to open buildings and whatnot. So I'll talk a little bit about that, then I plan to also give you an update on our efforts towards increasing testing and contact tracing in the county and in West Sacramento in particular. So most notably right now, this week, you can see in the report, it appears that there's a downward trend in cases, however, you see that we ended last week with 63, we're currently at 72 as of today. So that means there are nine new cases just since the end of last week. So that means there are nine new cases just since the end of last week and we're not even through this week. So, so it is a noticeable jump. It's, it's more than ten percent of the total for the, for the whole. We would like to attribute a lot of that to the fact that there is a lot more testing happening throughout the county. However, we will be keeping a close eye on a better indicator of, of concern. And that would be the hospitalization rate in the county. There are other indicators that we would like to look at, but unfortunately, the data that is reported is at the jurisdictional level. It's really just limited to new cases and hospitalizations. So that's something I, I plan to add to the report going forward. The actual increase in hospitalizations in West Sacramento, in addition to the ongoing case data. But as we talk about testing and tracing, that's going to be a really important metric to watch. So moving on to, I mentioned a couple of updates on city operations. So first of all, not official yet, but we're looking at keeping City Hall closed to the public through at least June fourteenth. However, we are working with a, a team of staff focused on the restoration of city services on limited bases until we can figure out how to bring things back more in full. So right now, the, the June fourteenth date is both an effort to bring back some of the people that are, that are mainly dependent on admin leave right now. And mainly that's because they don't have the capability of working remotely. Getting them back in the office and doing it in a safe way will enable them to, you know, be, be more productive at work at City Hall, but also lessen the amount of admin leave they have to use at home. So that's the plan for City Hall. When we say open to the public, it may look more like by appointment only. We're not quite sure how that's going to be rolled back in. We are doing some work at a City Hall in permitting right now where it's done kind of, you know, at the back of the building almost remotely. But we're hoping to transition some of that to the back in the building with the right precautions in place. The community center and rec center, however, we plan to keep closed for the time being. The rec center clearly is a stage three activity with, with gyms in the state order. We don't really have a date for when that would be likely to reopen. However, we are at least pushing it out publicly. We're kind of giving the indication that it'll likely be through the end of at least June, probably through the July fourth holiday. The community center, we will make one adaption. We do plan to reopen a limited service of learning ladder. We do have a high demand for childcare as people start transitioning back to work. And that's not just including essential workers, but some of the learning ladder families that we already have. So we're going to have to make some adaptations there. You can only have so many children in one place under the, under the order. So Parks is working with our other staff to figure out what those adaptations look like. And that's the date we're targeting, June fifteenth, to open a couple of classes at, at Learning Ladder at the community center. Other than that, Public Works Maintenance and Parks Maintenance Staff are back to full shifts as of June first. Parks actually already started, so the park staff are maintaining the parks at the normal rate. And then Public Works, like I said, will be moving back to full shift by the first of June. So now on to the update on the testing centers in, in the city. I mentioned last week that there are pharmacies in other locations, private locations in West Sacramento that are offering testing. We've publicized some of that information, including the pharmacies, but also Community Care Health Center, Ellica Health Center. But the one that we've been working most on is the public site. And so I, I can report that as of today, when Yolo County slash OptiServe moves their testing center over to West Sacramento, it will open at the Riverbank Road location, which is, in other times, used as a Club West teen center. But for this purpose, it will be modified to function as a testing center for the time being, at least through the duration of the, of the, of the testing plan, which would be through June twentieth. We hope to extend that, but there's a lot of details work out there. That was important just because we wanted to make sure that the testing was available at a place in the community where people can get to it and, and not have to worry about transportation. We talked about VIA being an option before. We're still looking into that, but there are some difficulties in that process. So we think this location will be more accessible to a broader range of the community. So we're happy to report that. The testing center will be open Tuesdays to Saturdays from seven AM to seven PM. We're making some modifications of the building to make it fully accessible, having a portable restroom and hand washing station available as well to meet the, the guidelines for that site. And then also, we continue to work with the county on the implementation of the roadmap to recovery. I think everyone's aware now, the board of supervisors met earlier this week, or yesterday actually, and did confirm that the county will be moving into, further into stage two. And, and then as of yesterday, with the governor's announcement on hair salons and barber shops, it's actually entering into stage three. There are some guidelines that need to be developed and put out by the county in order to enable that. So immediately, it's, it's going to be restaurants and storefront retail. By the end of the week, we could be looking at reopenings of, of barber shops and hair salon. So that's about all we know right now. We're learning as much as you are as the, as the state adjusts its order. But we're working with the county very closely on developing that, that guidance for the businesses and, and trying to do it in a way that also is complementary to testing and tracing efforts ramping up. I, I forgot to mention on the contact tracing side, we're also working with the county on bringing them more staff to actually do contact tracing. They have a, a good number at the county that are on staff, however, to meet the projections that, that, you know, we think and then all the public health experts that are talking about this topic feel that the ratios need to be per population. We're trying to build that number up. And so we may actually be looking at bringing back some of our furloughed employees to serve as contact tracers after they get training and, and appropriate background and all that to work with the county on that effort. So more to come on that. We're, we're working out details right now with the county. So I'll stop there and then see if there's any questions or comments for this week. Thank you. You're unmute.
Thank you, Mr. Laurel. Are there any questions or comments from members of the council? Councilmember Guerrero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question regarding the testing sites. Aaron, is it, are any of these free to the public or all of them free to the public? That's one question. And then locations and times, I just wanted to see how we can maximize getting, you know, of course, it's a, a big subject as we open up, access to testing. Is it something we can, you know, just, we got to continue to push to expand more testing as we, as we move forward? So I know you're working on it, but just, just encourage you to keep pushing for that. But just to get, it's just to the extent that we could provide information to the public on the location and the availability and, you know, what we can do to expand on it. And there's also the Great Plates Program that the county, I see you have an update, but the most recent update has been, you know, I, I encourage the county supervisors to see what we can do to implement it in Yolo County. And they, they submitted a letter at the last minute, got it approved. And I'm really grateful for the fact that they are going to implement it countywide. So if you can note that for your update here on, on your report, that would be great. And so what, what can we do to expand on providing additional information out to our local restaurants so they can participate in the Great Plates Program? Thank you.
Yeah. Let me, let me take that in reverse order. So on the Great Plates Program, it will be in my report next week. That was, that was sort of late breaking information, but the county did establish that program and they are doing outreach to local restaurants in all of the cities in Yolo County to participate in that. So I know that activity is happening. I don't know whether or how many West Sacramento restaurants are part of it, but I know it's in the works. On testing, you asked the question about the cost. And my understanding is COVID-19 testing at the places that I mentioned is at no cost. However, I believe most of them, if not all of them, require appointments. Our testing center, I believe, is the same and it definitely is, is free to the public. But I believe it's managed on, on an appointment basis. But we will definitely post comprehensive information about that testing center and also include information on the others as we can get it, as we post more information to the public. We spent the last few days locking in the site and all the details. So now that we have that, we will start the process of communicating it out.
Councilmember Roscoe?
I just wanted to add that it's fairly simple to just get online and put in West Sacramento COVID testing and it'll take you, it's like takes about two minutes or so to just sign up and look for a testing site. It's not, it's pretty user friendly, simple Google search.
Yeah, I want to thank, thank Mr. Laurel and the, the team and of course, our partners to, on the work on the, the testing and the tracing components of this. And we are, we are rapidly switching gears. You know, we were, we were preparing for a whole different situation. And we, just when we were getting comfortable with figuring out how to, how to, how to execute on a shelter in place order and all the different business requirements, whatever, they're all changing. And that's rapidly not going to be the job of the city for mu, for much longer. And whether, you know, as we move through and past stage two into stage three, the weekly and daily conversations that we're all having on the street and in, you know, in, across the park or on the phone or on the, or on Zoom meetings are going to be changing as, as the questions become less about, is this open? Is that not open? Or, or is there a rule about this or a rule about that? And more about the testing and tracing, the testing, testing and tracing strategy that's out there. And we now, we have enough raw numbers of testing options in the county as a whole. And we're building that here in West Sacramento. Our challenge continues to be, and we're getting there, but is building a coherent testing system that is capable of detecting, detecting outbreaks and then tracing them appropriately. That can't be done solely by testing that each of us randomly decides to go to on our own. It requires, it requires much more systematic testing than that. Earlier this week, we had a presentation from the city of New Orleans, which is one of the, because of the, their experience with Katrina, had some of the best emergency operations response on the ground and has tested more per capita than almost any place in the country. And they strongly emphasized that the, the need for a, a central point of, of the, of running the testing system, but most essentially, mobile testing. That the, the key was to be out in neighborhoods and in communities and doing free testing at the food bank distribution. Do testing at the park. Do testing in, in places where people are in order to get a, a, a cross section, a sample, a representative sample of the community rather than solely those who, who are nearby or can drive to a testing center and feel like they either need to or want to get a test on their own. Mobile testing has been a challenge. I know our team has been working on that extensively with the county. But it was, it was, it's become quite clear that this is the, this is the essential tool that's going to be necessary in order to, to, to really provide the sentinel system that, that we need for, for, for this. Because we talked about it in weeks prior, the virus is not going, going away as, as Mr. Laurel reported. We've seen it, we have seen a spike this week in cases and we're likely to see many, 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 many more cases. That is a, that's a direct consequence of, of returning to business even not as normal. The reopening and being back in contact in any way with one another is going to dramatically increase the number of cases. But the number of cases aren't the point here. The number, the number, as Mr. Laurel said, it is hospitalizations and other health-based indicators of the cases themselves. We, our community, like so many others, worked really hard to flatten the curve. But that curve wasn't a case curve. It was a, it was a ICU curve. It was an hospitalization curve and we were successful in that. But case, the number of cases will continue. We need to do our best to make sure that those cases don't convert into intensive care visits and into deaths. We need to save people's lives and health that are, that are, that, that develop the, the virus. That's the key. And then to assure that the spread doesn't, doesn't reach vulnerable populations. So that's, it's a challenge, I think, for, it will be for us as a city. It is for the county too, about how to communicate this issue, communicate this issue. Because I know that we've all, we're all grappling maybe ourselves, but also with neighbors and, and friends and constituents in the community who want to know, is it, is it safe or is it not? Is this activity safe or is this activity not safe? Is it safe to go back out again? And the, the challenge is, there is no answer to that. The, the answer is, it, it may be that there is an element now of risk in virtually all the activities that we undertake. Those are going to be personal choices, but we need to have the monitoring system fully in place in order to make sure that they don't erupt into a public health crisis. And that's, that's why the, the work on the testing systems has been so, has been so essential. And I'm really glad to see Mr. Laurel and our team helping to lead the way and to provide some clear-eyed leadership, you know, in the county and the region around that. It will also be essential, our partnerships across the river are, are key here. Mr. Laurel's mentioned this in weeks prior as well. I just want to emphasize that, you know, we have so much interchange, exchange of people, workers and restaurant goers and others with, with Sacramento County and the, the data connections and the contact tracing connections are absolutely essential to be made. And so much of the, much of our most important public safety work in, in combating the virus next will be less visible because it won't be, you must stay at home. And, you know, as soon as the order expires, it won't be about this nail salon or that restaurant. It will be about making sure that we have the testing and tracing and, and the supported isolation in order to prevent the deadly outbreaks that are, that, that will continue to threaten us for many, many months to come. Councilmember Roscoe?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add to my last comments that more specific information, it looks like it's on our city of West Sacramento website. There is LH air, LHI dot care and it's forward slash COVID testing. And there's also a phone number on our city of West Sacramento website with the hours and the fact that it is actually free for folks that need to, they do need to pick an appointment time, but I think the results are going to be maybe thirty-six to seventy-two hours after the testing. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And, and, and right now, most essential is that if you, if, if anyone in our community think, are, are feeling any of the symptoms that might indicate COVID-19, any of them, or, or have reason to believe or suspect that you may have been exposed to the virus or to somebody carrying the virus, then please get tested. It is, it is free. It's convenient and it's absolutely essential in order to protect, to protect public health. So. All right. Seeing, seeing nothing else on this item then, then next up is the council calendar. Ms. Berlin?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. A couple of items to update you on the calendar. The planning, the Port Commission next week on Wednesday will be by teleconference. That will be at five fifteen. The, the time is changed from the calendar that went out to you previously. The June fourth Planning Commission meeting, Planning Commission meeting that is canceled. And then the next Planning Commission meeting is June eighteenth and that will be by teleconference. And then also, June eighth is the River Cities Financing Authority meeting by teleconference at four o'clock. That's it.
All right. Any questions on the calendar? And the first, the first online commission meeting went okay, Ms. President, Madam Assistant City Manager?
Yes. Yeah, everything seemed to go really well. So.
All right. All right. City manager reports?
Nothing more, but just to add to the last comment, the Port Commission will have a closed session. So I think we're actually starting at five o'clock closed session, but I'll, I'll get out a notification to the, of those of you that are Port Commissioners. So nothing else. Thanks.
Right. Any questions on City Manager Report? City Attorney Report with the ceiling fan?
Sorry. I tried. I hate those ceiling fans. Turn it off next time.
Oh, no, no, no. We expect it every week. All right. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, Staff Director, members of the council. No, and we have no future agenda item requests. So Mayor Pro Tim Sandin?
Uh, I'll move to adjourn.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Sandin and seconded by Councilmember Ledesma that the meeting be adjourned. All those in favor, please say aye. I'm sorry, clerkly, aye. Even, even sixty days in, that's all that happens. So Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? The motion to adjourn.
Yes. Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sandin?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero?
Aye.
And Merrick Baldwin?
Aye. With the motion to carries and this meeting is adjourned. Thanks and have a safe evening.
Good night, everyone.
Aye.